Anything like to call or order the Woodland Park Planning Commission for May ninth? Please take a roll call for us.
Certainly, Chair Hartsfield.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Brown. Don Zellum.
Present.
Jared Newcomb.
Here.
Ken Kennedy.
Here.
Larry Larson.
Here.
Don Boeing.
Here.
And Cole Middleton.
Here.
Well, thank you. Please strike me for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a single item on today's agenda, work session for planning commission training. But first I'd like to welcome Jared Newcomb to the dais first meeting tonight. So glad to have you here and I guess Karen will turn it over to you.
Certainly Nina Williams, our city attorney is going to be presenting this evening. And in front of you, I have handouts. The one is a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that she's going to be going through. And then there are two slides in there that had really teeny text related to a conversation on quasi judicial and ex parte issues. So I was able to extract that content and blow it up. So you can actually read it with regular reading glasses instead of instead of a micro lens. So that's what you have for handouts. And then in addition to our planning commission members, we have the entire planning team here in the room tonight. Cause I've got some new folks there and this is part of their orientation onboarding training. So you all are familiar with me, the planning director, everybody's favorite Dave in the back running our AV. You see CJ regularly at meetings. And then our newest folks, I'm going to start with the gentleman in the end looking very formal. Grant Atty, he's our full time permit technician. He's been with us since January. And then Rick Dieter, he started last Wednesday. He's our code compliance specialist. So he's, he's the brand new guy and we're trying to break him in slow. So with that, this evening, I'm essentially your moderator. So to make sure that Nina can hear questions and be able to answer anything that way. And then she had asked, as we go through the content, if you have questions at that point, to go ahead and speak up with that question to stay on point is the way she preferred to do this, as opposed to try to save questions to the very end. So with that is we'll turn it over to Nina.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me virtually. So I came here in person. I know that this worked well, which I'm happy to have done, you know, during a lull because I'm very, very busy. Actually have a meeting where there's a gap. But tomorrow I'm traveling, I'm playing in the morning. So I appreciate that, but I'm going to be coming to a meeting soon in the future. And also with us listening is Betsy Stewart. She is our senior associate with our law firm and she'll be at some meetings as well. She's already been to some board of adjustment meetings.
She's, she's attending also from Zoom.
Like Karen said, it would be great. You know, the one thing I miss about not being there is really responding to your, either your questions or your comments. Please jump in, don't hesitate. Karen's Karen's not shy, Karen and I both are not shy with each other. So please, you know, even if you just do this, Karen will say, Nina, there's a question that you don't see. So. And I have not done Zoom in a while in terms of sharing my screen. So I'm going to see.
We lost her entirely.
This is short reading?
No, no. I'm sure she'll log back in.
That's the training, just kidding. We will chat again, I'm sure it'll be like I said, I've been doing this Microsoft teams lately, but not. There you go.
There it is.
Okay, great. So taking you back to nineteen, July nineteen sixty-one, the Green Bay Packers had just lost the NFL championships before it was even called Super Bowl. And their team was all ready, like what, how do we, how will we win the next time we're in the championship? What will we do? And Vince Lombardi, Hall of Fame coach, he had a different idea. His idea was he literally started holding a football. This is a football. We're going to start from the basics, start from the beginning. Fundamentals are important. So I just say that because that's important in everything we do, including this workshop. Whether you're someone with as much years of experience as Mr. Lee Brown or the new planning commissioner who just joined. It's important to go back to refresh us why we do, why we do this. So that's, some of it might seem basic, but it's all important. So this is a football of quasi judicial and other legal topics. This is more a resource, a resource, I'm not, you know, not going to read it, but we're the importance of the planning commission. So it come, you know, it derives from statute and also your home rule charter. It's in your charter and it's in your code, which is the next section. So, and oh, and we'll go over the types of applications, types of things that you consider. You review, it's really important. The city council should, you know, take, listen to your recommendations that you make. You're, you're the first body, a lot of times that the applicant is seeing. I've been working for a good group, you're thorough, you care. It's, it's, it's really, it's really important. You know, you ask good questions, you consider the person in front of you, but also the community. So your roles and responsibilities are here. They again, come in the charter from nineteen seventy-one. And then you have your code and then you have your bylaws, which we could talk about in the future. Meeting if you would like, but those have your, you know, information and, and kind of, you, you could adopt those periodically reconsider them, look at them, see what's working for you as, as a body. And here talks about the recommendations you make. So these are just general roles, responsibilities. So these are the type of applications that you review. Just figured it was, you know, good to have the chapter there, the procedure. You're very blessed that you have really good staff. So whenever something's before you in your meetings, you have, the staff puts together a really good staff report. And what I, as your attorney, really like is that they put what, what, what code needs to be reviewed at towards the end, how they feel it's been applied. But of course you could ask questions, have your own review and the procedural steps. So these are just different types of, you know, someone's using their property. They, they are asking to, for these various uses and ways to use their property. These are just a few examples that you'll review and a lot of these, some are the main decision maker, but many of them you're a review body and you make a recommendation to city council. So it's really important is a lot of the hearings that you do are quasi judicial. And I am, I would like to reiterate the importance of why we're always saying quasi judicial, this is QJ, or let, you know, let's, let's, let's be careful. And these next few slides will go over that. Please ask questions, but I always think it's good to talk about these things now versus when we're in the middle of a hearing. Because it's, it's super important to again, take that step back, see what's, what's important, what's your roles, what's your responsibilities and how you should be looking at these applications in front of you before it gets to a super contentious or heated or you know, there's fifty people in, in chambers screaming at you, which is the fun part of your job. So what I think is a lot of, most of what you consider is quasi judicial, but sometimes legislative. So how, how we separate, it's usually one or the other, whether it's be in front of you or in front of the city council. So sometimes to explain what something is, it's good to explain what something is. It's, that's why that this distinction in this slide. So legislative is broad application, you're making policy or you're recommending policy in your case. You're amending the code, municipal code, that's usually you're making recommendations to usually Title eighteen. I believe you guys might've made a few recommendations about short term mental or mental. So that's legislative because that has broad application, right? That, that relates to the city as a whole versus one property. So it's how those individual properties should be affected. So you're looking at some, something citywide. Back to, I won't go back in the slide, but back to your roles and responsibilities. A really important thing is that with master plan or comprehensive plan. And that's because you really take the time to look at how you feel. I mean, yes, it is a guiding document, but it's important to guide document and saying how you feel the community should be zoned and based on planning principles, which the staff helps and the consultants help with. But you combine that with what you know about your community and, and the different areas. So different zoning, building, land use codes, that is a legislative act. I keep, I don't know why this happened, sorry. So quasi judicial in contrast is narrow application. You're not making policy, you're applying the policy that already exists. Sounds like kind of, it's a corny joke, but quasi is kind of like kind of judicial. So in other words, you have, you know, like we have three branches of government and our national federal government is legislative and judicial. When you're sitting as a judicial, a quasi judicial body, you are the judge deciding the matter. If you come to that hearing and you're like, oh, I really wish that this code didn't say that. That's not the time to, to say that because that's not fair to that property owner. They've come to the property, they've opened the land use code, they've seen what they could do with their property. It's a good, you know, put a pin in that for future, like, you know, right after the meeting or maybe, may, please wait till the next meeting, maybe. And say, I think we really should consider that section amending it because that's not the intent that we had, or we didn't realize it had those implications. You know, that would be a future legislative act. So what it's, when someone's in front of you for a quasi judicial, they're in front of you as a judge. And you're applying the law that has already been recommended, has already gone through the vetting process and, and been voted upon. And you're applying that to a specific property. So most, again, most of a lot of what you do is quasi judicial, land use approvals, the historic preservation. Some of their items might be quasi judicial, even liquor licensing, which I know you don't do, but this is just an example because for example, liquor license, same way we'll talk about plan use. That's about one person's property interest that you're applying the, a different part of the code to. Does that make sense? Any questions?
We're doing quasi judicial things, but we're still recommending bodies. So we're not the final judgment, we're making our recommendations to councils, is that correct?
Yes, usually, yeah.
Is there any case where we actually are the judges and make the final decision? Yes.
In our, I'm going to help Nina out here because this is the nuances of our code, which it's all over the place. But there are occasions when the planning commission does make the decision. I, I forget which it is, whether it's a, a PUD extension or is the preliminary plat extension? I think it's the preliminary plat extension that you guys, if that's all the ask is, you guys can make the decision, yea or nay on extending that. And then if I remember right, under Colorado law, the planning commission is the body that adopts the comprehensive plan. As opposed to, to city council, city council can ratify it and say, hey, thanks for doing this, we agree. But the adopting body for that document is the planning commission.
Right, and your code is less than other codes in terms of the final decision. But even though you're not the final decision maker, you're still applying the code to the specific set of facts. So even though you are recommending body, that has to be based on objective factors, which we'll go into later, if that makes sense.
I think the planning commission also is the final rule authority for floodplain permits.
For what?
Floodplain permits.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, flood hazard development permits. And that is unusual that it goes in front of this body. Any other place I have worked, granted, it's not giant list, but there's a few other places. That was always happened, happened at a staff level. It did not have to go to a border body for a decision on one of those. So that's one of the interesting things here in Woodland Park.
And when you finish rewriting your land use code, hopefully, I'm, I'm sure there'll be a chart. Cause a lot of the newer codes are having that where it'll say each request and whether you're the reviewing body or the final body.
That is on my wishlist.
But again, you're still applying the law to the specific set of facts to make your recommendation that then the council lies upon. Because you're more in the expertise of, of planning than city council. And I'll tell them that any day. So this is why it's so important and why we do these type of workshops. All of our cities, all our planning commissions, all our city councils. The constitution, which is the guiding document of law in our country, as you know. So the fourteenth amendment says, no state shall deprive any person of, what's important is property without due process of law. So what's important, there's many elements to that. Due process is that to make sure that the, you know, the procedural parts of your hearing are all fair and out in the open and consistent because you're, you're affecting someone's property rights when they come in front of you. Again, it can't be just arbitrary, actually a court would overturn if you just made arbitrary like, I don't like Mr. Smith. He just came in front of us, but, but Mr. Smith is asking for something that, you know, he's following all the criteria in the code. He's otherwise. Otherwise it would be appropriate to give that to him. That would be unfair to deprive him of that. So it's constitution, constitution in the constitution. So that, and what's important is that everyone with the interest in the case, all the decision makers or review body, but you're still making a decision to recommend or not recommend. So that you hear the same evidence in the same time from the same sources. So that's why we always say, you know, everything should be brought to the public hearing. So if, if some, and we'll go into later, if someone comes up to you and they want to start talking about it, say, no, but either write a letter or an email, I guess nowadays, come and come to the hearing. I want to make sure my whole commission hears that. And that's, you know, not only because again, will we say the next one to ensure opportunity for a fair hearing that you're unbiased. But it's that anybody who would be adversely affected by the decision, not only could be appealed, they could hear what's going on. So anyone with an interest in the case, that doesn't just have to be the property owner, that could be adjacent property owners, that could be the, the community. They have a right to hear why you made the decision to recommend or not to recommend and what you base that upon. So that would be anything in the, what we call the record, would be any of the packet, would be any, any public comment that anyone who just comes to that hearing, looks at the packet, sits and listens to the decision. They understand how you came to the decision or what you based it upon. So that's really important. Think of at the, out in the open all at once, not just out in the open, but all in one container. In this one public hearing and the one packet materials, usually sometimes you continue your hearings, but you still it's the same here. So what we try to help our planning commissioners with and what I've had phone calls of a few of you throughout the years. You, you know, you ask, well, how, I want to make sure I'm impartial. So again, back to that due process constitutional right, impartiality, that's what we always strive for. So there, there's three main ways that I could, if I could divide it into three ways that impartiality is affected. These are the three ways. So one is ex parte. Another Latin word, I write mystifying Latin terminology. There's a drive towards totally taking away Latin language from legal because it's going to make more accessible. So, but ex parte communication is when one person has a conversation with either, with one commissioner or even the whole commission, which you would never do this, but outside the presence of other parties of the case or other affected individuals. So I just give an example, a neighbor comes up to you, Joni's to express their concern with a certain development application. That happens, you say, I'm sorry, want to make sure this hearing's fair. Another way to talk to that person, because they might be all intense. What I would say if I were you and not just, oh, my lawyer told me this in a slide, I would say, listen, your opinion is really important. I want to make sure that the whole commission hears it and that it is heard in the public hearing record, heard in the public hearing or in the public hearing record. I advise you, if you're free that, that, you know, the day of the hearing, to come to the meeting. Woodland partially good, you guys allow your residents at all times. If they have other family committees, they could listen on Zoom and they could speak on Zoom or you can write a letter, an email. And that's, that's how, what I would do if I were you. But don't, you know, even if don't, don't have negotiations, I've seen sometimes, you know, developer will go up to one commissioner, you know, it's, it's, it is, it's a small town, but it's important to say, no, I'm sorry, I want to make sure everything's out in the open. I, I can't do that. It's the same thing as, you know, since I bring up the example, I haven't watched Law and Order in a while, but if you watch Law and Order and, and the, the one, either the defense or the prosecution, it's your, you know, want to talk to the judge, usually, I mean, the circumstances, the judge talks to one, but usually he has both, he or she has both, right, in his chambers. Because it's, it's that, you know, that all, both parties can be privy. Another way that you might be impartial as a commissioner is if you have prejudgment or if you have bias. So you gave a speech, you signed a petition, many Woodland Parks seem to be, there's a few people who are active on Nextdoor, this Facebook. So let's, he said, I, I don't like affordable housing. I'll never vote for anything with affordable housing or vote to recommend. I'm against, you know, out of town developers coming into our town. Don't say that because then someone who's maybe from Manatee Springs comes along and they have a development. They could perceive that you already have prejudged. So you have not been, you, you know, you're, you're here as a judge to, to decide what's in front of you. And if you've already made your decision that you're never going to, you know, pick for anyone from outside Woodland Park, you're never going to, you know, let's say non Woodland Park resident, I'm never going to vote for anything or, you know, recommend for anything for someone who doesn't live in town. They could perceive that you have a bias and that you're not fairly coming, impartially coming with an open mind, applying the, the code to the facts at hand. The third way to be impartial is usually more obvious. You or immediate family have a personal or private interest and that's pecuniary, financial. For example, your spouse owns a restaurant seeking a liquor license. Maybe you own property next to a large development that somehow you'll be affected whether or not the development goes a certain way. The most calls I get from my planning commissions is when, again, always call, don't hesitate. But a lot of times it's, oh, I'm, I just wanted to check because, you know, I know that person, they're my, you know, grandkid soccer poach or, you know, next door neighbor, just a friendship, you know, it's small town. If, if we, you recuse yourself from everything, from anyone you knew. Then there would be no ability for the person to have their decision decided. So the conflict, you know, it's up, and only you know, if you have a buy, if you have a true bias and you, you cannot, you cannot listen to the facts, you're just so biased and, and not in a bad way, just you, you know, you personally, this is somebody that you can't see, see clearly, you already know the person too well, there's history there. Then, then you know that you want, and you, you don't have to go into deals, you could say, I'm, I'm going to recuse myself because I want to make sure this is an impartial body. But the conflict of interest is, if that's the reason, it's really a true private interest, like think, think mostly financial, that sort of thing. Does that make sense?
Nobody's knowing.
Hey, while you're on this slide, Nina, let me ask a question or two, just to help. Maybe get some more information on the table. If we think we have any predisposition or conflict of interest, maybe it's not financial, but we just know it's our neighbor doing something. And we're sitting up here. We don't necessarily have any personal interest in it, but what's the procedure?
Yes.
For identifying, making it known and who makes the decision on whether it's a real conflict of interest or we just wanted to ask, you know what I mean? What's, what's, when something comes up, if somebody comes in and we know something about it or feel like there may be something, how do we handle that?
So unlike the city council where they have a very clear charter provision about conflicts of interest whereby they need to actually vote on it and the other council members need to decide. The technical answer to your question is you as a commissioner decide. You guys have taken an oath, you're conscientious, you're doing the right thing for your community. Only you, I, I can't, I'll talk it through with you because on the bottom, it's when it's out, ask your city attorneys. And I would say at least three of you I've spoken to and please before the hearing, because then I'll talk you through it. And then we'll, we'll make it clear on the record. So for example, you can call and say, want to talk this through and then I'll talk it through with you. And you'll say, yeah, you know, I, yeah, they're, they're my neighbor. So I, I'm worried somebody might think something and I'll say, well, will you financially benefit from it? And then I'll ask, oh, actually I have questions here. I mean, do you need to think, you know, are you, are you able to decide the case fairly and partially? And most of the times when I have the conversations with you or you say, yes, I, I do, I, I'm going to, I saw, and I'll further go into that. I'll say, well, you know, you, you, meaning you're going to look at what's in the packet, you're going to hear what's the testimony in front of you and you're going to make the decision based on the code. Oh, yes, of course, I'm, I'm, I would, I would be fair. I'm just want to let you know that I know the person. And then I'll say, well, is it an actual conflict? And we'll go, we'll, we'll go into these questions. I do it all the time, please do not hesitate. All the time with all my communities because it's, it's not a bother because really when these things come up, it's, it's once, it's once in a while for you individually. I, I, I answer it maybe a few times a month over the few cities I represent. But you know, it's, it's, we'll talk it through and then I'll help you all say, okay, well, it sounds like you are saying that you were able to decide the case fairly, but you're, you're worried about the perception. So do you want to disclose on the record? So you've done it before, before the hearing start, start to begin the hearing, you'll say, you know, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make an announcement. You can even say, I'm smoking, spoke it through with the city attorney. I am the next door neighbor of, of this person, but I feel like can decide the case fairly and partially. I could help you if, you know, what to say. Or a lot of other times people say, well, can you just ask these questions? But it's all on the record and I've done that as well. And then if it's a true conflict or you can, you say, listen, I, I, I just know myself. I, I don't think, and if this is not negative, this is actually positive that you're acknowledging like, you know, there's, there's too much history here. I don't want to go into it, but this, this and this happened and I, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be able to, we'll say, okay, well, you'll just recuse yourself, you don't, it's, it's up to you how much information. You don't have to feel like, oh, it's, you know, it's embarrassing, that, that's actually, it's, it's, it's better that way. So we'll, we'll talk it through, that's what we're here for. But, and again, I've done it many times in terms of, you know, talking it through. So does that make sense?
Yeah, so during the course of a, a business for the planning commission, we'd get a agenda, we get a, a packet, we review it ahead of time in the meeting. And I feel like everything's fine. And but at any time during that meeting, if I feel like something goes away, that I probably should recuse myself. I can do that at any time during the meeting. Like if I've listened to twenty-nine or, you know, thirty minutes of the presentations, the public hearing, and then it's time for a vote. I could still recuse myself at that point, could I not? Or do I have to leave? Is it too late? You know, I mean?
No, it's not too late. Is I, if it is a true. I would say it's very rare that that happens because usually you'll know. You'll know, and just having your, your neighbors, you know, talk against me, tough decision isn't, isn't, you know, a reason to not. But I'm not saying that's what you're saying, we're just kind of talking it through. And I'm hesitating because I would, I would, if possible, like you to make that decision before because you wouldn't want to have to have participated in the hearing and asking these pointed questions. And then suddenly you're recusing yourself. It, it rarely, it rarely happens practically that you don't know from the beginning that you'll have.
So typically, if you think there's an issue, recuse yourself before the business of that part of the meeting.
Yes, and again, we'll talk it through before the, before the hearing. Okay, I'm like, I'm here as a resource, we'll have a few minutes.
I just thought that would be a good discussion to have with the rest of the group that's new. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Well, and to Nina's point, I find this an interesting twist I hadn't thought about before. If you were to sit through part of the hearing and Nina phrased, ask pointed questions and then step out of the room. Were you swaying the rest of the commission? Were you creating other doubt or issues? So that's why, you know, she's really advocating a very clean break here, that if you're at all concerned about issues or your ability to, to remain neutral, fair. um, about issues or your ability to, to remain neutral, fair and objective, um, bow out at the start of the item and make sure that everybody has that clean and fair opportunity for review of the request.
So I, I have a question also, so.
Uh, we need to speak up a little bit, Cole.
So when we, when we reviewed like the King's Crown plot, for example, that was my neighbor, but I just abstained from voting. Not just from morally, I just don't, I wasn't necessary for me to vote because we had enough members. And, I mean, I was gonna vote, uh, what, what the council on the decision, but from a moral perspective, I just think it was easier to abstain. Is there a legal objection to that? As an option?
No, there isn't. I just, um, the reason why you sense hesitation, no, there's not in that circumstance, but I've been in situations where, um, I'll, I'll take it out of woodland parks, you know, in different community where there was something that was so contentious and the per, I could tell the person just didn't want to, um, make it like a tough decision because like some of their neighbors on one side, someone on the other. In that case, it's really not proper because the, the person has a right to co, to come in front of as many planning commissioners as possible. Um, but in the case that you're, um, saying, again, it's, it's ultimately up to you. Um, if I were you, that's probably what I would have done anyway, just because of the perception. Um, and, you know, that way you felt, um, if there's any doubt, let me just, you know, remove myself. So I think you made the right decision there.
Well, Nina, to expand on Cole's example, let's say, I know he's neighbor and I feel he might not be a unbiased opinion. He can recuse himself. Can I, as a commissioner, object to his participation?
Or recusal?
Yeah.
Or either way?
Either way, I guess, yeah. But do the other commissioners have any say on another commissioner?
City council where they vote on somebody's participation or not? Do we have any input into somebody's participation or not?
No, you can, I don't want to say you cannot. However, my hesitation is, I don't want to tarn, uh, I don't want to say I'm biased for the city, like, I don't want to tarnish, um, the, uh, uh, perception of the hearing, right? So let's say you say, oh, but you should recuse yourself and then he doesn't. Well, now, if, if the, if the vote goes a different way than the applicant or resident wants, are they gonna bring, bring that up? So I'm always ultra cautious. I would like to have these conversations. Um, you know, well, if you were, you know, call, call me and then we can talk to the other person, um. But that being said, I can't, I couldn't, you know, stop you from bringing that up because if you have a true concern, um, I, I will say like only the commissioner themselves really knows if they could, um, decide something fairly, but I, so I'm, I can't say that we can't speak up in that case if you are truly concerned.
And then it is preferable, if you are recusing yourself from an item, to actually, um, leave the room or sit in the back and be very good with no facial expressions, no nothing. Um, because I did have an example early on in my career in Mesa County where one of the county commissioners had uh, a conflict and recused himself and then proceeded to sit in the front row and make faces of displeasure, annoyance or whatever. So her, her views were, were very clearly expressed throughout the hearing. So that does not meet the, uh, the intent and of, of what a recusal is supposed to.
Do we have a policy there? Because I know a few times I have refused myself, I've been asked to leave the room, not sit and witness what was going on.
I don't know if it's in our, our bylaws for this committee, I don't know if we've got a firm policy. I know my preference is to leave the room because then there's no doubt. You know, so it's just one less thing that to argue about with somebody at another point if they decide there was a problem.
So yeah, so it went into out, ask your city attorney. So, um, I put my email at the bottom of this, I think, oh, you have my phone number too, but you guys Karen for it's on my email signature. A lot, it's, uh, if, if it's a hearing day, this has happened before, it's hearing day, you, uh, like I said, a few of yous happened a couple, uh, years ago. It's, it was some very contentious, you emailed me and said, I'd like to talk right away, they're called or said this, like, yeah, I'm free at three P M, let's talk. Because that, that, that moves up the, to the, you know, the priority of, of the stuff. So here's just more suggestions. Follow the process, set up the code. Again, your staff has a really great job in those, in those staff reports, um. Itemizing the code, it's up to you how you apply it. So not saying I have to agree with everything that's in the staff report, but what they do is they really do a good job of, these are the, of the subsections, you should be considering those. So whether it be a factor or a standard or a criteria, that's what you should look at and then apply it to the facts, the facts that are in the staff report, that are in the applicant's, um, presentation, that, um, public comment that relates to code factors, um, that sort of thing. As opposed to personal opinion, subjective feelings, individual preferences. And again, in a, in a vacuum, this seems obvious, but I would say almost so many times I, I, I see this happen and I don't say in a judgmental way. You know, first of all, all human beings have all feelings. You were, you have, it's a small town, you feel strongly about your town, you, you volunteer for your town, you, you work really hard for the city. So, um, it's just, this is just reminding you like, oh yes, I know I feel strongly about, but I feel should be, I really wish that that other um, developer purchased this property, but this is the owner and I'm gonna be fair, I'm gonna apply the code. So you're gonna base it on the facts, the law, the evidence, the testimony, everything that's in the record. So we keep talking about a record. The, the term of art is such that if anything is appealed, um, what the district court judge will look at is everything in the record. They won't look at anything outside. So that's why, again, it's important that everything is in the record. So again, remember that, um, friend, you know, neighbor who talks to you, Jones, you say, no, no, I, I mean, these are good points. Write an email to, um, I think, uh, whoever the, I think it's, uh, well, Karen will let anyone know who, how, how this goes, I don't, the city clerk for planning commission names, but you know, write, write an email, come to the hearing. Um, and you even say, when we have Zoom, we still allow Zoom participation. So I know you're taking care of your elderly mother and, but, you know, you have Zoom up in the background. You raise your hand, you'll be able to be heard. So that will all be in the record. So, um, it's what you're considering, you're only considering what's in the record. Um, it's, uh, well, I'll, actually I'll go into more pointers in the, in the, in the next, uh, one of the next slides. So deliberation is important, um, because if, if there's a, you know, a lot going on in a hearing and then you just make motion to approve it, you know, the, no one understands, well, why did you make that decision? So I pulled thinking out loud, um, I would like, you know, at, at least a few of you to talk and say, well, um, I really feel that the applicant either did or didn't cover, you know, these fourth criteria, um, because of this, this and this. And that's why I'm gonna be voting to amend or not, uh, I'm sorry, to recommend, not recommend or recommend the conditions. So like I said, you should, uh, serve as the judge. Again, even though it's not the final decision, you're still making an official recommendation. This is an article.
I got a question on, on the record?
Yes.
Uh, we, we have minutes produced of our decisions and our discussions, but we have also a recording. Uh, usually it's audio, video.
Right.
Are both those things part of the record?
I believe so. I believe a judge would look at both.
Yeah.
Yeah, other items in that record would be that staff report, the application itself, uh, our PowerPoint that we present as staff. And then the PowerPoint that the applicant presents, we do keep a copy of that. Um, when somebody produces something in paper at a public hearing, you'll steps quietly, but assertively, make sure we get a copy of what is in the pa, that the paper that they're providing you guys. And I typically make a note on there in terms of submitted by the applicant, and I try to put the time on it. You know, for when it was handed over in the meeting, just to kind of help it tie back in if somebody is really questioning related to the recording. Uh, so that's all the pieces that are, that are being assembled, um, in terms of what is the record.
Yes, and, um, I worked for a judge, um, on the, on these type of cases, well, we did all types of types cases, but in, if this case would come in front of me, um, in the past, in my past life, um, I, yes, look at the audio, is there a transcript? This case is not transcript, but, um, audio, there's, um, everything that Karen's saying, anything that was submitted, because those are all the things that you were making a decision upon. So then you look through everything and then you see the final decision and you say, well, based on all of this, um, the standard is, is very hi- high to overturn, it's if you were arbitrary and capricious. Um, so because a court, courts do, even though this, this whole presentation outstanding, courts do give deference to the local body that is, you know, in front of everything. It's only if things are blatantly, um, not based upon objective standards that they would overturn. But in order for them to make that decision and know that you made the right decision, that's why we want to do these things. We want to deliberate, we want to, um, make sure the record's clear and, and, um, that's, that's, you know, that's just a little explanation as, as to, um, when these things happen because, you know, you might think, okay, yeah, Nina just doesn't want the city to get sued. No, that's not, I'm not, I want to preserve your decisions. You, a lot of, what I see in a lot of cases is not that the, the body is actually acting arbitrary, it's that I know they're trying to get there, it's like they're, I want your decisions to be upheld because I, I do know that you are conscientious and you are doing the right thing. And you're trying, you know, you're trying hard, so and you had, you, you, you know, had, had you just made sure everything, or usually it's maybe the staff, I mean, you have a good staff too, but the staff puts everything in the record, that you consider everything, um, that those decisions are upheld, because it's important and what you, what you do is important, so.
Probably time to point, point this out that commissioners should not have conversations among themselves. I can turn it down and say.
Yeah, dur- during the meeting, the sidebar?
Yeah, I, I know that's pretty obvious, but I, I've seen that happen.
Yeah, no, it's, it's helpful, um, to make sure everybody stays on point, on topic. Um, partly from just the standpoint of doing minutes, or if somebody is going back and wanting to look at a, a, the recording for review, they're not, you're not able to tell what the sidebar was, you know, did that impact a decision? Uh, that, that can be, can be troubling. So.
Right, so they're doing everything in the record and then for the, naturally for this, the judge, which happens once every few years, but, um, for the, again, remember the person who's sitting there, who it's either the applicant or it could just be a neighbor who wants to know how you came to your decision. That should all be up the, in the open. So, yeah, don't have those, those conversations, say it out loud.
The other piece related to this is, um, at a staff level, behind the scenes, we're very concerned with making sure public notice requirements were met. Um, you know, was the sign posted in a timely manner? Did we get the ad in the paper at the appropriate time? Uh, did we get the letters mailed out to the adjacent property owners, letting them know of a pending land use application? Because that's been my understanding that that's one of the, the potential failure points, you know, if something does go to, to a judge, that if you screwed up notice, then, then that's, that's highly problematic. It makes it much harder for them to, um, you know, honor the decision of the local body. It's, it's really about that process. Um, I'm sure there's something you want to add there, I might have not quite gotten that right, Nina.
Well, the commissioner doesn't need to worry about that, so they have good staff, um, but yeah, if that happens, I'll talk, we talk with the staff. Um, but yes, all those things are important, um, properly noticed and that kind of thing.
So, so question, like the staff report, for example, um, we see that before the meeting. Um, it, it appears to me that the, the public does not see that before the meeting or when do they say, because there might be things in there that they would, uh, want to know about, might have an opinion about, might, might object to, et cetera, et cetera.
It, um, the staff report does get sent out to the applicant and then it also gets posted on the city website. You know, so under the, the meeting link for that meeting, there is the ability to download a copy of the agenda and the packet that gets posted. Um, occasionally we're a little slower than I would like in terms of getting that packet posted. We're getting better. Um, getting much better.
Twenty-four hours ago, yeah, that's good. Yeah, but so then the, the public could see that and then, um, that, that's good to have in advance because then maybe the public, um, maybe they had three questions and now they only have one because it was addressed already, or, or actually maybe they were so, um, so frustrated with this, but then when they read the, the staff report, they're like, oh, actually, what I'm worried about is, is addressed here.
And, and what I mean, we're a little slow, you know, our packet goes out to you guys either a Thursday or a Friday. Uh, sometimes it's, um, sometimes it's a Monday or a Tuesday before it hits the city website.
That must be what I've seen where I, I've gotten the email and it.
It wasn't.
I don't, all they see is the minutes on the, uh, on the link. Yeah, okay.
So we're, we're working to make up, when the packet goes out, it goes on the website, just, um, to, to fine tune that process or that system. So it, it's kind of in the same breath for us.
Okay, excellent.
It's an article I wrote about, I don't know if I, uh, I can't, many years ago, um, but it just says things a different way, so, um. You want to read it, read it.
So that's, that's what I blew up for them. It was December of twenty seventeen, um, that I made much larger for people to hopefully be able to read.
Oh, good, okay, good. Yeah, this is, um, it's, it's hard when you do PowerPoint to try to, um, perfect. So yeah, it just says it a different way, um, but nothing has changed, uh, you know, nothing has changed with these principles since twenty seventeen. Um, just a different way to say these things. So, I'll move my face so I can read this. Um, so conducting public hearings, oh, any questions on positive digital, as, uh, any questions about that? So, conducting public hearings is most of what you all do also. Um, see, city council has a break. They do all different types of things, a lot, most of what you do is public hearings, um, not all, but, so your goal, and I've seen you all, um, these are your intentions, to make sure that, um, the public and leaves a public hearing feeling it was fair and their views were heard and appreciated. Now, that doesn't mean that views were, um, you know, the decision was what people want, it's that it was fair. And it's not just the perception, it's that you are doing that. Um, again, going back to, uh, constitutional due process, but also just from the human element, when people come to a public hearing, you know, they don't, you know, if, this is the first time they've come to a public hearing, it's like, okay, yeah, everything's out in the open. They're going through, and even at the end, you're going through this, I've seen you do it before where, you know, twenty people come against some, uh, they're so angry about, against something and it's really every point that the, the people are angry about is, is not, is, has nothing to do with the code. And I've, I've seen you say, listen, we heard the public, but we have an obligation to follow the code, it says X, Y and Z and, um, you know, uh, I guess like a, a reasonable person would, would feel like, okay, they explained that, it was fair and, um, when I go in front of the planning commission, they're gonna be fair towards, towards me and, and what is on my property and what the code says. So just suggestions, you've been doing it, you have a good chair, good vice chair, um, but this is just a good reminder for the new, newbies. Um, I think you already have, um, I would say if a lot of people have signed up, you know, you say, at the beginning, we're gonna do three minutes, however you're gonna say it. As long as you say at the beginning, I don't have a problem with it, that it's not in a, in a, you know, procedure guideline, it's more people hear it. Um, as when people hear the gu- guidelines from the beginning, um, let's say you have a full house and you, even if you want to explain, well, this is how it's gonna go. We have a lot of people signed up, we want to hear you all, um, we are gonna put the timer on that so that everyone has a chance to hear, it's not to silence you, it's just everyone have a fair chance. Um, that's good. Um, where I've seen it done wrong is the first five people go on and on and then for the rest of the people, you, you cut their time. Which you guys don't do this, but this is why I list. You could suggest that they don't pr- uh, repeat prior testimony, sometimes that helps. Um, sometimes people say, oh, actually, I agree with everything that was said in front of me, but that's all I want to say. Um, public testimony is a public comment, um, directed to you, really shouldn't ask questions, um. Because the person could ask a question, you could say, we'll address it later, or we'll have the applicant address it later. I think that's a good way to, um, not feel like a, a jerk if people ask questions, because you don't really have that back and forth. And that reason is, is to make it a fair hearing and a, and a pin, but you could say, that's a great question, we're gonna make sure that the applicant answers it during their rebuttal and then the person could go sit down. Um, these are all things that you, I've worked with you long enough, I am, I, and, and not even just the people I don't know yet, you all in a conscious community. You, you give people your full attention, you're not, um, that's, but these are just good reminders. And then a good reminder is also the applicant. So the applicant has a right, again, back to due process, they have a property right, not that they're, um, that you grant their application, but they do have a right to make a full presentation, to present witnesses, should they want to, to respond after a public comment goes, that's important, they have that right, um. You know, despite, again, what the public sentiment is about, they have the right to be heard, um, this is their application. Um, so that's their rights. This is a good, uh, outline, um, that you already follow, but it's good to just be reminded. Uh, during your questions, you could ask questions to anyone, you could say, I mean, I've seen you do it before, you know, Karen or CJ, come back up, can you explain, a few people in the public said this is this, but I read the staff report and I see, and then they say, yeah, actually, and then they, you guys have pulled up the site plan, you say, this is what it is and yada, yada, and you could ask questions back to the applicant. You actually could ask questions, um, back to the public. You actually could ask questions um back to the public if you would want to um. You could ask questions to the a- attorney, usually during these public hearings, um we would like it that we either are. There for, you know, true procedural questions, or if you have a a legal question as to the code, we try not to um. We're not here to sway your decision, we're here to make sure it's fair. Um technical questions you ask staff. You deliberate, you think out loud, then you make a motion, you could make an amendment, we'll talk about that soon. Maybe we'll talk about it next, will we? Yes, we will. Um. So taking action, this is a good resource to si- to save, I feel, um parts of this. So we'll talk, the future slides will talk about conditions and amendments, but um. At the end of the day, again, you're you're making a recommendation for approval, you're making a recommendation recommendation for denial. Or you are making a recommendation for approval with conditions, so those are usually the three choices. And I put, you must take some kind of action. I believe it or not, I have seen um hearing where it's just like, no one wants to do anything about it. But you, it is, it is a tough job that you guys have, you have to make a decision, you have to take some kind of action, then again, the applicant has that right. And also the public too, to kinda the angst of like, well, what's gonna go on with this property um to make that action. Whether it be recommended approval, denial, or approval with conditions. So yeah, you can't refuse to make the motion. Um amendments are are good, we'll talk about. Um in two two slides, I have another screen that shows me, um in two slides we'll have, we'll talk about conditions, that's usually what what you'll do for an amendment. Um you could make the motion with the conditions, or I've seen. Um you make the motion, then you say, well, I wanna make an amendment. The amendment has to be germane to the main motion, has to be. Uh acceptable condition, which will go into acceptable and unacceptable conditions, but um it can't be uh, I don't know that. The person takes you out to dinner after or something, I don't know, it's you know, has to be very, it has to be direct to the application. So it's, yeah.
Say from a process standpoint, and you may wanna talk about this, I guess, when you get to the motion with conditions. Is I've um seen this group on several occasions during the discussion. Say, well, I think we need to add a condition, so that's actually part of the discussion. And then, you know, they wordsmith it a little bit later, and then when somebody does make the motion, quite often that then gets incorporated at that point. So I'm assuming procedurally, that's pretty solid, cause you've never spoken up and going, Karen makes a.
Exactly. I as you're talking on, say that, if I were to say. Every, all these hearings uh for my past twenty years doing this, what where I'm jumping in is is helping you. With the with the little motion language, amendment language, I always make sure to say, is this what you're trying to say? I'm not trying to insert myself, but a lot of times I'm trying to make it more clear, I'm trying to say, uh I'll speak up if. Well, actually, we we didn't, you gotta do it this way, or I, since I say, I think what I'm hearing you say is this is, as he says, actually, yes, that's what I'm saying, or I'm saying it with this tweak. So that's that's usually where I'm in in inserting myself, just to make sure either the record's clear, or everyone in the public knows it's being voted on, uh that type of procedural help. But yes, you could do that, you can make, so you could either make the motion, I move to. Um recommend approval to city council based on the following conditions, I don't have a closing, anyway. Uh that's, that's kind of, I could have put the quotes at the end of this um to include that. You could also make a motion to approve. And then when emotions, once the motion's seconded, you could talk about the motion, and then someone can say, I would like to make an amendment, so it could be done anyway. Does that make sense?
I'm a little confused, just typically, any amendment should, my understanding is to be included in the motion. And so if Ken makes a proposal and I say, no, I want it to be different color, I can't do that without his approval. As the motion maker, we have to vote on the initial motion, then deny it, and then move forward with a new motion? Or how does?
Yeah, like like, you know, maybe Ken made the motion to approve, and you're like, I really thought we should have included that extra condition that we talked about. You say, I I make a motion to amend the the previous motion to include this condition, then we would debate, vote on that. And then if that was accepted, now we would be approving the original motion with the amendment to include your condition in in that case.
Yes, because you wanna make the motion to amend before the other motion is voted upon. Cause once the, like, let's say you just uh vote to approve, and then everyone votes on it, it's 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 closed, so you wanna make sure.
Yeah, so I like the way we normally do it here, where we we kinda kick the tires on that, and so by the time someone makes uh an amendment to approve with the conditions. We haven't voted on it yet, but it's, I feel the sense of the council is pretty clear, you know, we can usually make an, someone can usually make an a- a motion that. We'll all find agreeable. I think it's.
Yes, so if it's a motion seconded, then the person can make the a- a motion to amend, and then if it has a majority, then that is the new motion that then is voted upon. But we we speak up, um you know, if if we see something that's um. It procedurally could be cleaner, we'll 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 say, we'll we'll speak up, so we're here to help you.
Go ahead.
Also a question, uh you say we can make a motion to deny, we haven't typically done a negative uh motion. Majority of things probably get passed here, but uh is a negative motion appropriate?
Yes, so you could move, cause you could, um the three, usually the three choices, you could recommend approval, recommend denial. Or recommend approval with conditions.
And if a negative motion gets turned down, wasn't supported by the commission. Then I guess the issue's still open?
Yeah, so that's the. That's the fir- the fourth, um the last, uh the most right column in this slide is a failed motion, so let's say. Um somebody says, uh well, actually, is part of this part, so if someone says, I I vote to. I move to deny, and only three people vote on that side, and four people vote no. Then one person from that four might say, should should jump in and say, I move to recommend approval. So we want a majority, um something that, again, we wanna take action, so we want a major, a motion that's been voted on by the majority. But I've seen it happen both ways, where it's um the first time person saying, actually, I vote to deny, I move to deny, because the person is not. Um you know, complied with X, Y, and Z criteria. And then that's even, that's either that, that's what's recommended to council, or it doesn't pass, and then the flips, the flip person, someone on the other side should. Says, I I actually even have a motion, cause that motion fails, I move to approve.
But if, but if we agree on the motion to deny, then that applicant, application is denied, right?
It's recommended denial to city council, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right, Karen.
Yeah, and you could, you you are within your rights to um recommend denial. Um the second. Column here talks about the importance of findings, um that the record, this is case on the record includes the evidence, so um.
And in that case, at that moment, it is dead and done, I guess then the applicant could appeal. Is that, do I have that right?
They go, it still goes to the council.
That's what I was gonna ask, is it still go to the council and they still get to review and decide? So whether we approve it or deny it, it still goes to the council.
Oh, okay.
Cause you're a recommending body.
Question, yeah, fine, okay.
There are, very rarely, because the magic that this professional staff does is we work with applicants. Um around what it is that they wanna do, and um we try to help them navigate the process. And present a strong case, uh you know, flag that, hey, you know, those nine thousand cars um at that. You know, two-way stop, that's not gonna cut it, you really need to beef up the traffic report and look at what does this need for intersection improvements. You know, and they're all, no, no, this is fine, they can still ignore staff and.
Yeah, as I say, so the applicant still has the right to to, hopefully they're smart, but um the applicant has the right to still have their decision heard in front of you. And there could be something that you might disagree with staff, or sometimes staff is, you know, has helped the applicant as much as they can, but. Um there's no recommendation, really, it could go either way based on you as the final decision maker in looking at the quote code criteria. Um and it and um and then you could. Uh you you know, you could recommend approval or denial, that's, it's again, as long as it's based on code criteria, not based on your personal preferences. Would you feel that property, I really wish that um a bowling alley would go on that property, that's not appropriate, cause it's it's up to the property owner. But as long as it's based on objective code factors, and you've you've kinda discussed that a little bit. Then that's that's the 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 person's in front of you, you're not, you're not an overstaffed, you're there to really deliberate, and it's for you to decide, for you to apply, apply the code. You know, I'm, the the substantive, what you do is never important to me, it's that to make sure that you've made the decision objectively based on. Um findings, based on objective criteria, you've applied the code, that kind of thing. This.
You go ahead, Nina, I'm sorry.
No, no, uh if you're just gonna say.
Um I was just gonna say, the applicant certainly has the ability to pursue the application through the public hearing process. Um I said, there's a, the reason you don't see, you know, very often staff recommending denial, is because we've worked with them. Hopefully, they've listened, they've put their application in the strongest position as possible, and we've gotten to a point where we think it meets criteria. Um every once in a while, you will run into somebody that's like, nope, I'm gonna do it my way, I'm taking it all the way through, I want them to hear my case. You know, and you guys might look at that and go, staff, how did you let this in here? Um or you may hear other information in the hearing or from the community and go, okay, staff, that was nice, but you know, we're gonna support this. So regardless of your recommendation, they can then proceed on to city council. Uh we have had an instance where somebody uh wasn't comfortable uh with um with a a denial or concern. And then they would like retreat, you know, and and we kinda like go back and dust off the application spruce up and then come back through again. You know, um rather than risk, you know, something truly ending up denied, it's like, okay, well, maybe I will listen.
Yeah, but everyone, like, the applicant has the right to go in front of you, um that's their right, they cannot, they can't be told not to go to a public hearing, cause that's their right, so.
They're entitled to um to to hearings, you know, through the process, they are not entitled to approvals. Is.
Very well put.
Yeah.
So I wanna ask the question again, cause I'm a little confused now with Don. If we do not approve a request for a. Uh um some some time limited feature, um either the one-year or the two-year extension, and we say, we're gonna deny it. Does it still go to city council or not?
You're recommending denial to city council, so here it says, I vote, I move to recommend approve, denial to city council.
What I do wanna check is, like I said, I think it's, if it's just a preliminary plat, that that's what's in front of you guys, where you can potentially make the decision. Um I'm not sure if it's clear at all in terms of, you know, appealing that, whether they they can just.
Just whoever this final decision maker is, so if you're the final decision maker versus making a recommendation, then it could be appealable. But if you're just voting to um voting, you're moving to recommend denial to city council, which is most of what you're doing is just recommending. That still goes to city council, and city council, but they'll get your decision, and that'll mean something that they'll look, you know, maybe look further into the record and that kinda thing. It'll say, planning commission recommended denial, and then the the appeal, the final decision. So the, who's whoever the final decision maker is, doesn't change whether it's um recommended approval or denial, that's the final decision maker. Make sense?
I think so, so.
You know, I think it's also very important that ninety-nine out of a hundred times, we'll see a recommendation for approval coming from staff. But if you have a applicant that's not being cooperative and not meeting your expectations, not meeting the criteria. Staff should not have, be bound by giving us a recommendation of approval. You should feel comfortable saying, the way the applicant, the application, the plan has been presented, we recommend it be denied.
Yeah, I've seen that happen.
That has a recommendation, and that's tough to do, I know, I've been in your seat.
I know you have.
Yeah, but as, there are times when you just have to say, no, this project, the way it's been evolved. Should not be approved.
Right, like I said, I'm not concerned um with how you decide things, it's not um, it's just as long as it's. Fair, objective, based on criteria in the code.
Exactly. The other thing I wanted to mention at this time is too, is I really appreciate the staff report and the staff's. Scripted motion in the staff report, that is very helpful, to be able to make sure we cover all those bases. Instead of just being in the motion of the moment, saying, I think it ought to be approved, okay, second.
And you you will notice that if somebody does make, and and I do this at city council especially. Um if it's not something, or something that's just based on a motion and not an ordinance or a resolution, so, well, I moved or approved the application, I second, and I'm generally going. Different conditions, please, please add the conditions, um because those are oftentimes key. Uh for things that need to happen so that that application is acceptable. If you take those away, it's like, eh, you're not getting what you think you are. So I I wanna emphasize, the the conditions are very important when they are listed. Um and I appreciate your your for, your your um willingness to really dive into them and the appropriateness of them and. And amending and revising and adding conditions, you know, because of information you've heard in the hearing or or your own analysis. So um that's why you're here, is to look at that and make those additional recommendations. So thank you.
Definitely, um and then vote on the application before you, I've seen this in. And there's another city I represent that does it more, uh way far more than you all, but um. Well, I was, I it maybe about a year ago, I was in a hearing, and then it was for residential two, and they just kept asking, well, can you. Oh, it was, it was multifamily residential three in this in a city, and they wanted to be multifamily, uh I'm sorry, residential two, whatever it was, and. I kept reminding, this is the app, this is the applicant, they have the right to make the request, you don't have the right to say, well, if you make. The change in motion here in the middle, you know, uh in in the middle of the hearing to a different zone, um that's not right, so um. That's why I'm saying it, um and this came up recently with a city council member, um. Don't conduct your separate research and then bring it to the hearing, please don't do that, that violates ex parte and also prejudgment. Um and then people say, oh, then I can't read the news, no, that's not what we're saying. It's it's that that deep dive into things, and then you bring that to the hearing, that's not for you to do. You're there to decide on what's presented to you.
But if it's a research into the city code or analysis there, that would be appropriate.
Yes, yes, definitely, and then you come with your questions and um. It's it's it's, I would say the difference is um not just the, you know, the code versus independent research, um. Then you're coming with with questions and and thoughts and want things to be clarified versus trying to. Advocate for something that you did research for to try to um to try to get towards. I've not seen any of you here do it, so just wanted to bring it up. So grounds for denial, like we said, it's totally appropriate for you to deny an application, otherwise. There would be no point for you to even be here, right, if every decision that came in front of you just approved. Um so these are appropriate and inappropriate, so I mean, we already spoke about it, Larry um spoke to it. Um but yeah, anything in the in the in in that code section, so again, the the staff report will list the criteria factors, whatever it might be. Um and you're, and you say, well, actually, yeah, they didn't comply with these, th- this this application doesn't comply with these three factors. Um that's why I'm making this motion to deny. It's inappropriate for you to deny something if the developer doesn't volunteer a condition which you really thought they should have, which they couldn't. Um which you couldn't independently ask for, so a lot of times. They, the developer sees some of the ways some things going, and they do volunteer a condition, or you even ask, um or sometimes you'll ask me. You as a a any planning commission will ask me, well, can the applicant, can we add that condition, and sometimes I, you know. Well, does the app, does the applicant volunteer that, or are they agreeing? Sometimes they will. If they say no, then, and it's not connected to, um well, we'll go to the next slide, what's a proper condition, but. Um then you you have to say, okay, well, we tried, and then your personal belief that. This property would be better doing something else, or if you don't really, I don't really like um this density here, but if the code expressly permits that. That's not for you to say, that would be inappropriate for you to deny, just because you don't wanna have um maybe eight units on a property in a zone district that. Has um permitted it.
So let me kind of walk up, for instance, maybe like parents are lyrics, well, um clearly, you know, this is gonna increase traffic a tremendous amount. Um probably C dot has said, you know, that they should widen the road or something like that. And if the developer has not expressed an interest in doing that, that would seem to be. That would seem to be appropriate ground for denial, but another option might be. Approve it with that and impose that condition on our approval. Then the applicant is free to take that advice, not take the device and likely risk, you know, denial at the council. Um, so, so I, I'm thinking you could do either, is there. I kinda like the second, where at least we provide a positive path forward, it's like, yeah, we would approve this. You know, we will approve this with that condition, and then it's up to them to decide if they feel that's a condition they can meet.
Yes, and if it's a condition that relates to what they're requesting.
Yeah, yeah, sure, it's gotta be relevant, yeah.
Yeah, but yes, of course, that, that's appropriate too, cause you heard everything and you say, this fits into. What they're requesting, if this one piece, so that's where you would approve with the condition.
Even, even if it's a condition that they had perhaps not expressed interest in meeting.
Yes, if it's related to, if you're able to make the condition, which we'll go to the next question. Um, but yes, they're not always gonna, uh, um, I would say the. People won't always independently agree, however, if you're going to approve something with a condition that's appropriate. They're probably still gonna move forward. So these are acceptable conditions and inaccept, unacceptable.
Usually they're asking us for permission to do something. And if we don't like what they're proposing and we could modify it with an additional turn lane or something like that. I think it's appropriate to put that condition on the project. And they can decide ultimately if we're not gonna do the project because we don't wanna pay for the turn lane, it's their call.
But at least we gave him a positive path forward, I mean, I like that.
Yeah, I like any, even your perception of chi- of trying to make um, things work, um, yeah.
I do wanna say that sometimes, even when. They get the recommendation or the approval with the listed conditions, that positive path forward. Um, sometimes it's at that point that they go back and look at, what is this really going to cost? Is this um, going to cash flow, is this development going to work? Um, and then they may, or may, they may decide, yeah, this is great, it's gonna meet my financial expectations of the project, I'm going for it. Or they look at that and go, yeah, kill my project, um, and you, you hear about that other places, about that darn city. Um, but that's part of what we do is to make sure that. Um, it's going to be viable and function well and work within, um, you know, the, the, the uses impacts and process, you know, uh. Just, just the whole thing is, is functioning well and is in addition to the, the community as opposed to a choke point where the city grinds to a halt. Uh, where there's excessive noise twenty-four seven, you know, just, just any of those impacts. Um, you know, it's part of the, the whole vetting process for somebody to carry forward with their project.
And the applicant will withdraw their application at any time.
Yeah, that happens a lot, um, where it's like, you're talking about so many different, um. Different concerns and, and they have, they, they, well, they either could. Yeah, if it significantly changes, they'll say, well, actually, I would like to withdraw my application and they, because they could sense, okay, I gotta. I gotta re, redo this and, and, um, and then, and then you, you see them come back and you see that they've made, made those changes, they've made it work. And they're explaining what they could and couldn't do, and then, and that's a positive outcome as well, I see that happen a lot, so, um. Just, yeah, these are just examples of acceptable conditions, um, again, it depends on what the application is, but whether there's land education requirements. Maintenance of common elements, preservation of trees, redirecting traffic patterns, you just said that, and then again, conditions offered voluntarily. Um, by the applicant. Um, as long as they comply with the laws, we've seen, uh, uh, that kind of thing. So then unacceptable are density restrictions where the code doesn't allow it, let's say they um, are going for something that, um. They, nothing in the application even mentions the density, they're, they're just applying for what, what the appropriate density is. And you say, well, I approve this, except half the density, that wouldn't be right, if, especially if, if the, if the zone district, um. Supports that density. Um, matters outside the applicable portions of code, architectural review, so, another one of my cities that I had to remind them, they do not have architectural review. Um, standards that they were trying to put these type of, what they thought, um, how the building would look. Um, but there was no, no um, basis in the code for that at all, I had to speak up and say, well, actually, that's not appropriate. Uh, for you to do, um. And technical requirements. You know, if it's truly technical, like a true, you know, e- engineering and design. Um, do trust your staff, ask before the hearing if you can, you can, anything you ask before the hearing, you can also ask during the hearing, so everyone hears. Um, but I've seen some other communities where someone thinks they know better than, than like an engineer, uh, that's very, very, very particular. That there's no way without, you know, the expertise that you would, um, know, of course, ask questions, that sort of thing, but. Um, don't try to redesign or, or roads or sloping or that kind of thing, please. So. Next is open meetings law, so this, actually, this last slide, so I just wanna make sure, do they have any questions on, in the conditions of approval? So again, when something's in front of you, usually.
Nina, hang on.
Nina, quick question though. Let's say it's a well-received project, but maybe they have one too many houses on the project. And exceeds the density, can we recommend approval or violates a portion of the code?
Oh, good question, no, um. I- 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 if it actually violates the code like versus a, a PUD which might allow deviations. But no, yeah, you can't, you can't do something that is, has no base in, in, in the code.
But could we recommend with the condition that they, you know, bring it down within the acceptable density?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that, that'd be great.
But if, if there's some place in the code, we, I mean, it meets ninety-five percent of the code requirements and there's one and they're coming to us, and. We can't technically approve that if it's, I know, staff's gonna review that, it's probably they're gonna get to us, but, uh.
Doesn't mean they don't wanna hear it from you.
That's why, like, P Ds or P U Ds.
They would request a variance along with their application.
That would go to the board of review, right, not planning commission, right?
Yeah, and they don't, um, there's no, I don't think the variance allows for density, but that's what a PUD is for, if someone wants to do an alternative. But yes, if it, if it's a.
Doesn't comply, we're not supposed to approve, okay.
But then again, you may think it not complies, I may think it complies, so that is a matter of interpretation.
Yes.
Depending upon what it is, yeah, um, one of my other favorite developers from Mesa County. Um, the zone district would say six units per acre and they would come in with an application with eight units per acre. And staff would push back, they'd work it out, get things down to six units per acre so it complies. And then they get in the hearing process and they talk about staff costs me two units per acre, you're killing my project, yeah.
That's why you get the big bucks.
So, you know, there's, there's just sometimes what the.
Telling them what the code already says.
Decided the project needs to be and what they're, they're bringing forward and, um, they come kicking and screaming along the way sometimes, so.
But yeah, you have no right to approve what the code doesn't allow, cause back to legislative versus um, quasi judicial. If you feel, um, there should be more, more density in, in certain zone districts, you're, you're gonna um incorporate that in your land use code rewrite. And the person could apply after that's been amended, when you allow a hundred units per acre.
That'd give the neighbors a basis for appeal.
Um, more than, well, I, 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 I think just the legislative adoption progress of the revised code would be, um. Most sporting, shall we say.
So just to recap, um, most the things, most items that are in front of you, you're the recommending body, so you're making a motion to approve ultimately. A motion to approve, a motion deny, or a motion to approve with conditions, so that's what we tried to go through here. So this is just a refresher, cause it's in a legal workshop on the open meetings law. You are, as a planning commission, you are subject to open meetings law, so open meetings law is also sometimes called sunshine laws, um, globally. Um, it's the, the, it's the, the, the idea and the philosophy, which is important, is that everything is out in the open for people to observe. Um, so any, any governing body, which is a city council. Or a board that directly advises or makes recommendation, they need to have their, um, open, they need to comply with open meetings law. So that means full and timely notice, which is twenty-four hours at least before, you know, the agenda's gotta be posted. Um, what's a meeting, this is important, um, because. If three, if three of you are in a text string or an email string and you're talking substantively about public business. That violates the open meeting, so it's not just a physical meeting. Um, the reason why that would violate the means law is again, back to that philosophy, is that the public should be able to observe the public business. So, um, this could be even things that are not on a public hearing, like, um, if you have an idea for, um. You know, at the end of a meeting, you wanna talk to planning staff, you know, I really wanna talk about, you know, looking into changing the code this way or that way. Talk it out loud, a- after a hearing has been closed, you know, you guys have that informal time at the end of the meeting. Talk about it then out in the open, instead of a few of you talking, um, again, it could be text. Um, chat boxes, you, you, you guys spoke about chat, um, you know, side conversations. Um, it doesn't, i- i- it doesn't apply to a chance meeting or, um, if you all, three of you are in a hiking group, you know, just, just don't talk about public business. But you're allowed to like communicate with each other, um, and the statute includes that because, so there's no gotcha moments. Um, and then it's when you're talking about public business, so three of you could be on a text string or group chat, I think they call it these days. Um, but you're, you're, again, you're talking about. Um, hiking or golfing, that's fine, it's, it's, when it violates open meetings law or flip side, when you want to make sure it's public and not on the text string. Is you talk about public business, policymaking, talking about a hearing, in ordinance, that kind of thing. The. There's a typo on this one, I don't know why I put pending, but this, uh, hunter green color in the bottom left. Um, is a new statute, well, twenty twenty-one, and it, it, it's still quite emails, so a lot of times you'll hear people say, oh, don't, don't reply all to an email, that's, that's, that's a meeting. That's true if it's substantive, you're talking about the merits of legislation, not if like you're saying, um. Uh, I don't know, there's, if, let's say it's a work session and there's gonna be pizza and you're like, I like pepperoni, you know, that's not violating open meetings law. If you're replying all, it's easier just not to reply all at all versus saying, well, is it substantive or not? But, um, this is designed to protect people again, um, from, you know, from being, say, being, um. From people accusing them of, of, of violating open meetings, you know, we're not talking about anything that is public business. And then here we heard you about talking, texting during a meeting, so that could be, I, you know, I, I've seen it, um. Especially when COVID started, we were talking chat boxes about, uh, everyone was home, right, so you're, you're, well, not in a little park, but a lot of communities are home, they're chatting in, in the. In the, in the box, we had to disable all of that because they were talking at the hearing, it's like, no, make sure you're talking, and not just a hearing, a meeting, you know, make sure you're, it's all out in the open. Um, now that you're talking to staff, um, talking to developers, um. And believe it or not, I've been in a situation where I've had to tell council members, please do not text. That applicant or that per, um, person who's, um, in favor or against an application during a hearing. Um, you'll be surprised at things that I have, have to say to people. Um, and then executive sessions, rarely planning commissions, but it could be for legal advice, so. Executive sessions is an exception to the open meetings law, so. The policy basis is when the public interest is best served, if certain matters are discussed in private, so. A lot of, sometimes people will say, oh, they're going behind, behind closed doors and, but actually, that's when the public interest is served, so an example is a real estate transaction. If, um, city council is meeting and they're, and they're saying, well, we, we'll go up to four hundred thousand dollars to buy this parcel, but, you know, start with two hundred thousand. If that's in public and the, um, owner of the property would have, um, sold the property for two hundred thousand. Now two hundred more, two hundred more thousand dollars of taxpayers has been, you, you know, wasted, so it's, it's when a true public interest is served, if it's in private. Um, I would, I've seen it happen in planning commissions when it's, um, legal advice, so. You want to speak to the lawyer in something that we, that I wouldn't, I actually, sometimes I, I say, well, actually, I, I can't answer this now, but I can answer this in executive session. I will give limited legal advice for a reason that I'm not seeing in public to be taken against the city. And you never can make final decisions, so in the exact, just, even just for you to know, when you see city council going to executive sessions, they cannot make final decisions. And you need to make sure you say the statutory bases and that two-thirds of the people present need to vote for it. Cause it's in very limited circumstances that you should, a body should go into, um, executive session. Any questions on open meetings law? All right.
I guess I'm just. You know, kinda like where's the line between ordinary logistics questions or. First, you know, maybe procedural clarifications and then obviously, if we're gonna talk the substance of the proposal, of the application. No bueno, but, um. Clarifications on which co- section of code applies to this situation, something like that, is, is.
You mean to staff or to the lawyer, you could always do that, that's, we're not part of the body, so you, you could, yeah, so, um, you could always and should always ask, um. Questions to staff attorneys before, um, a lot of times. I'll answer and then, and then we'll both say, yeah, this is, we should answer this in public too, so everyone can hear it, but, um, but you. But, but, but you talking to staff is always okay, that doesn't apply to, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I will say, uh, when you guys read a staff report, if there is something in there that you're going. What are you talking about? Um, you know, you are definitely welcome to contact me or the, the writer or the board, typically CJ. And, um, we probably will not answer your question at that point, um, or we will be taking note and making sure we include it in the presentation. Cause my philosophy is, one of you is asking, it probably wasn't done well in the report and somebody else is gonna have a question also. So I might as well just throw it out there and, and get it cleared up as part of the presentation, um, to, to supplement the report. So that, that is helpful, especially, um, I, I appreciate the running start as opposed to getting caught flat footed in a hearing too.
Yeah, now you can do your homework.
No, I, I really do appreciate the running start.
Yeah, it helps and also I would say, please, um. Don't hesitate if it's legal question or procedural question, and ask me before the hearing as well, um, that would really help.
And Nina knows I'm not shy about speaking up if it's something I'm uncomfortable with or uncertain about. Um, definitely willing to reach out to her going, um, excuse me.
Yes, definitely.
So, uh, to, to be as prepared to, to help your meetings go as smoothly as they can, uh, you know, cause nobody likes to look. Like they've been caught off guard in an, in an open public setting, so.
And then also your questions will be, um. More chance that they will be answered, cause then, then the staff can look into, um, you know, my, something that I didn't think about, and then they'll look into it, and they'll be ready for that question. Um, they'll be able to do the research and then that really supplements the hearing and the meeting in a, in a positive way. Any questions, anything that you would like us to speak out further, um. Let us know.
Nina, going back to the slide on taking action.
Yes.
I, I thought of something after we moved on. We have, uh, failed motions, what if we have a three to three, uh, or six. Member of planning mission meetings, we come to a way of impasse where three people are saying, no, deny it. And then three are saying, yes, we just can't reach an agreement. Is there any procedure at that point that we follow, or should we be, try to be civil and say, let's. Uh, put, with, put this on the table and consider it at another meeting and. What would happen if we can't make a decision?
Yeah, good question, so. First of all, that, this relates to another question I was recently asked, um, by you and I've also, not you personally, but your, your commissioner and also, um, in another city. So. It, it, when we speak about everything we, we've spoken about with quasi judicial. You, um, the, the, making the decision maker, you as a decision maker should have been at the hearing the entire time. Um, I'm asked about that all the time, people get upset when I say, um, otherwise. And like, well, we could have just watched the video, that's, it's not fair, again, imagine if the judge just didn't show up and. He said, I swear you wa- I watched the video, so that just reminds me, so if, if there's six, if there's six people and you. To continue the hearing and have, try to have an odd nu- um, number, it would only work if one person, you know, maybe didn't show up, but not if someone else came. Because the, you need to be there for the entire hearing. Um, if we're in that decision, there's truly nothing that we can do, then it would, then it would have to still go to council, um. I haven't seen, I don't think I've seen it. I don't think I've seen it. Or it's been very, very rare, um. We do like have, I do like having an odd number of of people, but if 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 truly. No, you you enter the whole hearing and then it was just kept being three, three. Um it's only fair the applicant that 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 then goes to council. Um if it goes to council and they're in that situation, then it just doesn't, um their their. Their application doesn't get approved, because you need to have a a majority of people vote on a motion to succeed. But I would say if um if it was three, if it was a true three-three situation, we couldn't get out of it, it's only fair that it still goes to council and we would. Write it up and say, you know, after much deliberation, planning commission, it was it was a three, three, um. Yeah, vote and it's an edit and pass. It's what I call the best worst scenario, like in other words, it's that's not um. How I how it how it usually happens, how I how I would hope it happens, but what's more fair than the alternative? Is that it it goes forward to city council versus sitting in limbo. I'm gonna know the first, so you have my, oh, you you printed it out, but at least you have my email, um. The other, I used to have a different email, it forwards on, so um it's actually, that's actually the Nina account, so don't worry. Whatever email you have for me, that is gonna gonna get to me. And um should you have any questions and? If you have any future workshop topics, anything you want to us, you know, me to reiterate, we'll come um back to do that and I'll be there in person for that time. I'm sorry.
Go back up to again, please.
Isn't it on the first slide?
Yeah.
You might not be able to read it, I'm sorry, it's a little small.
Yeah, I got it, okay, thanks.
Yeah, Nina at um WWFD law dot com. And then um Karen has my contact information if you lose this this paper. But I've been, yeah, I've been working with planning commissions. Um for around twenty years in two states, which I lose my accent, but you might tell I'm from New York. Um but I've seen a lot of different things and that, you know, substantive knowledge, but um what I find helps. My commissions is um the question that you're asking in some fashion, it's like, oh, well, this is what we did in this situation or this is this situation to kind of talk through. Um never feel like there's any stupid questions, it's good that you you're thinking about things, you truly care if you're asking a question, so I always. Um that's why I do this this work, um cuz I feel passionate about helping local communities and for you to help you do the best job you wanna do.
Very good, thank you, Nina, appreciate the input and the direction you provided.
Thank you.
And my my team was really, really quiet, so I don't know if they're gonna tap me there or. If all is good.
Okay.
They're they're looking pretty mellow. I think they're good. So. Thank you, Nina, very much, I appreciate you doing this, I um I didn't give her a lot of notice, it was what, about two and a half weeks or something since I had an. Opening of the schedule and I was seizing the moment, um especially since we've had. A number of new folks joined the commission and then like I said, I've got a new 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 team members and just thought this was a. A great opportunity to pull everyone together and just just draw a baseline, um just background information and. And like I said, every time um I sit through one of these, there's like a new nuance or a twist or I learn something and. Um for this one, I love the decision chart, you know, um that that really is a nice handout, in fact, I think I'm going to. Extract it from your PowerPoint and make it part of the binder that we give to our new.
Yes, all our resources, please.
So yeah, even after for me, you know, doing this for twenty plus years, you know, I'm still very appreciative of your time and effort and.
That's why we go back to the football, right, Karen?
Yeah, collecting resources, you know, and I've been doing that with my own team internally, you know, as I, we started that uh with um Rick's. Uh arrival last week, so it's like, yeah, yeah, what what is zoning? This is the football. So it's going well. Thank you, Nina.
Welcome, thanks everyone.
Thank you, Betsy, for attending and sitting in. So. That's all I had tonight, Chair.
She had uh opportunity for reports, any updates on what our future calendar might look like?
Uh at the moment, it's kinda quiet, um. I and I just don't know, I like said, just. Since I've got this this quieter window at the moment for hearing items, uh really focused internally on um I'm I'm training the team. And um. Yeah, our transition to the the permit tracking software, it's it's slow and limping along, but we are. We are making some progress, so that's. Even though you're not getting the attention right now. It's other things that are essential to our operations and I know um you would love to have another work session on the code. But there's just limited capacity and and it's. It that it that's all I got. So thank you for your patience and grace.
Just to reiterate, the next planning commission meeting um um that was previously scheduled for May twenty. Fifth is canceled, uh city council needed that uh night for a city council meeting.
May twenty-fifth is canceled due to lack of business.
Lack of.
It's the end of June. End of June, the second meeting in June.
Gotcha, okay, wanted to clear that up, so.
Um hang on, let me get a calendar. Let me do this with a calendar.
June twenty-four.
Uh yeah, May twenty-third is canceled because there's not any pressing business in front of you all. And it is um June twenty-seventh. That is canceled since um city council needs the 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 meeting that night, they're. The week before, they're at the C M L conference and the week after is the July fourth holiday and um you know, from. They're doing business on June sixth, um waiting to not meet again until. Would it be July eighteenth? That's that's just not feasible, so they really do need that that night in between to make sure things keep moving. So. And that that was all in my email I sent out. Um you know, that that. That reminded you of tonight and stuff, so I think that was fairly well spelled out.
Any comments or questions from the uh commissioners?
Just.
When I first got on the planning commission. Um there was a number of new people or several new people and. We discussed that our meeting time at seven o'clock. Uh seemed could push us late more often than not and we switched the time to six thirty as a group. Decided that would be better for potential. Citizens, applicants, everybody, if we could do that and most commissioners were okay with that, some had a little bit of tight timeline getting here from work. From the distance, so just throw that out that y'all are a new body. We discussed it, if you all have any issues, that was a topic that we discussed about how we operate. I noticed the city council also picked up and went to six thirty. Which I thought was a good idea too, but anyway, just thought I mentioned it.
From a staff perspective, that we started eight, the six thirty time start is definitely appreciated as opposed to a later meeting time. Um you know. Yeah, yeah, we would love it, we would love it even earlier, but you know, for the reasons you mentioned, uh you know, when folks are. Uh working down in the in in Colorado Springs, it is it is helpful, whether you're a commission member or somebody from the public who wants to attend the meeting that. That that extra half hour is appreciated, um you know, as opposed to meeting at six, so. I really, I really don't wanna go to a later time, please, please, please stay at six thirty. Uh Board of Adjustment also meets at six thirty, so that right now is a pretty consistent time slot for our evening meetings for our various boards. So that. May help with just predictability for our community and what to expect from from our various boards and committees.
I have a question, one more, one more question, who's the guy sitting next to Ken?
Jared.
Hi, Jared. Are you a new commissioner?
I am.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you were appointed what, within within the month, it's.
Yeah.
It's really, really recent, hence no name tag, we we at a staff level. Blew it, but we'll fix that.
Nothing else, it's. Anyone else? That's eight, ten, meetings adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.